Fall to order, the November 6th, 2017 meeting of the Board of Selectmen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first item, approval of minutes of October 16th, 2017, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of October 16th, 2017, regular meeting as estimated.
Second. Seconded, any discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor? Very good. It's just past the hour of 7:00 PM, we have a public hearing with the Board of Assessors for the purpose of discussing the valuation of each class of property, the minimum residential factor, the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property, residential, open space, commercial and industrial, and of personal property. John, take it away.
Thank you for your attention. We are going to be looking at our tax classification hearing this evening. As you know, everybody on the Board has been through this multiple times at this stage. This is a statutorily required hearing that you must take, that must take place on an annual basis, the end result of which is the tax rate will be set not by the town of Northborough, but under Prop 2 and 1/2, the tax rate is actually set by the Department of Revenue. But it's based on decisions that you'll make here tonight with regard to the values of the various classes of property. So in terms of the agenda this evening, we're going to give a little bit of an overview regarding 2018. It's an interim certification year, so it's not a full reval year. This is interim adjustments that get made so that when you do do a complete reval, that you find that values aren't very far off the market. We'll talk about what is tax classification, because still people don't understand exactly what it is. What's happening to the town's total valuation? I always use this as an opportunity to give you a little bit of a snapshot in terms of where we are with regard to values and what's happening in the town as a whole in terms of economic development and growth. And then lastly, we'll talk about what does that mean for us. After I do the intro part, I'm going to hand the presentation over to Dan Brogie, our principal assessor, and Dan's going to go through the meat of the purpose of this evening's meeting, and that is to look at the tax rate options and the implications. What your job is at the end of this presentation is to actually vote with regard to classification and also to look at the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption. So let's start with what is tax classification. Basically, tax classification allows the Board of Selectmen to explicitly shift the tax burden from one class of property to another. You have residential, open space, commercial, industrial and personal property. Before Prop 2 and 1/2, basically what communities used to do is they would artificially keep the values of the residential properties down, inflate the properties of the businesses, and there were things that could be done to manipulate the values and shift some of the tax burden onto or away from the different classes. Under Prop 2 and 1/2, everything that we do with regard to how we set the tax rate and how we tax people, the value of their properties is all very strictly regulated. So with Prop 2 and 1/2 came the possibility of actually voting this by policy and doing it explicitly. So the Board is able to shift property taxes from one class to another, up to 150%. Now, there's a couple of key concepts we talk about every year. The first is that doing this does not result in any additional tax dollars. You're going to raise the same amount of money, it's just a matter of who pays their fair share. And so it's a policy decision, as I said, to artificially shift the tax burden from one class to another. One point I always make is, again, this goes back to the inception of Prop 2 and 1/2 in 1979, 1980, and that is that since its inception, no Board of Selectmen has ever instituted tax classification or voted to artificially shift tax burden from one class to another. And fundamentally, the discussion that usually takes place is that it's a matter of fairness and sustainability, and we'll talk a little bit about how it relates to our economic development strategy as well. So what's happening with our values? Fiscal 18, which is the year that started on July 1 of 2017, so July 1 of this year, and goes to June 30 of 2018, that's our fiscal year. The Department of Revenue has certified new growth in the amount of $33.5 million. So this is, this is basically new development or new personal property that comes onto the rolls. And the new growth calculation is important primarily from the perspective of Prop 2 and 1/2, because this determines your levy limit. In terms of the individual property classes, residential values are up about 3.9%, commercial values about 3.8%, and industrial values about 2.7%. So this is the big picture view. In terms of the town of Northborough and what it's worth, its overall valuation, it's gone from about $2.69 to $2.79 billion, and I always say this with a B, not million, but billion in fiscal 18. Now, that's positive, literally and figuratively. You want to make sure that your values overall as a community are increasing, that's a positive trend. If you saw that going down, or you had a negative trend where you've had values going down for multiple years overall, that would, that would be something that we'd want to have to discuss in more detail. But again, once again, this year, our values overall are moving in a positive direction. In terms of assessment by class, if you go back to the early 2000s, Northborough was about 80% residential and 20% commercial industrial. And through our economic development initiatives and getting good development, particularly in the right locations, like at the crux of Route 20 and 9, where you have the mall that just went in, we've been able to support the residential tax base by growing our commercial industrial development. And as you can see from this chart, we've sort of stabilized right now after going through a couple of years of significant growth. We've stabilized now at around 75% residential and 25% commercial industrial. And absent some other major investment in the town down on Bartlett Street, on the Gutierrez property or something like that, this is kind of where we're likely to balance for a while. It'll shift based on market valuations a little bit, a point or two, but this is where we've settled in. In terms of the new growth, it comes from multiple places. Residential new growth is a little over $11 million. We don't have any major subdivisions going on. These are a house here, a house there, renovations, additions. Again, no big track, there's no big condominium complex or 40B project that's coming in. This is sort of a normal amount of activity in terms of the residential market. The commercial is about $5.2 million in value, about 4.2 of that is the second phase of the Northborough Crossing Mall project. So as you go up to the mall on the left-hand side, you see Margaritas, Anthony's Coal-Fired Pizza, Jimmy John's, Muya, St. V's, that's the second phase of the mall. That's what's representing the commercial growth that we captured this year. I know it seems like a lot of activity and it seems like a lot of value and growth, but as you can see, overall, it's really not that much. It's about $5.2 million. Industrial is pretty flat, we haven't seen really much in the way. Most of our growth in the commercial industrial area over the last couple of years has been all commercial, primarily real estate, I'm sorry, primarily retail and restaurants is what we've seen a good amount of development in, which is good. The restaurants are very good economic development for us, because in addition to being a good, a good tax base and tax growth, we also get a percentage of the meals tax, and that's what we use to fund our, as you well know, our other post-employment benefits. Last but not least, under here, we have $16.8 million in personal property. Now, this is a number that I always caution the Board on, because these numbers up top here, that's, that's real physical development, and, and the way I always kind of couch it is, think about your own personal value, right? You have a home, if you own a home, that home in general will appreciate in value over, over time. It might bounce around a little, but it tends to appreciate. And then you buy a car. What happens to your car? What's it worth five years after you buy it new? What's, what's it worth, you know, six months after you drive it off the lot? Okay, that's the distinction when we talk about the value and the growth of the town. This is the houses and the buildings and land subdivisions, right? This is the racking systems, the office equipment and so forth. Personal property is an important number for us to be cognizant of from a Prop 2 and 1/2 levy limit perspective. So in terms of how much we're able to increase our taxes without requiring an override, it's important. But when you look at economic development, you look at new growth, not all new growth is equal. And just to give you some perspective, we've added $16.8 million in personal property growth. Well, the personal property is, depreciates over time, just like your vehicle. So despite adding almost $17 million in new growth, our personal property account overall for the town is really only up about $433,000. Okay? Again, it's just important to understand these concepts, that when we talk about new growth and what's happening in the town, that it's not all equal. You know, this is, this is where the, the real development is. This, hopefully, you hope that companies that are in town are investing in new personal property and that it will at least offset the depreciation of what's on your, your tax rolls now. Again, total, about $33.5 million in new growth for fiscal 18. Those of you that know me know that I love trends, I love trend analysis, I love to see data plotted out over, over many years. This is a chart of our new growth with multiple colors. But you can see this big peak here, and I know you guys know this, you know, what was the first couple of years of this peak? Anybody remember?
Avalon.
Avalon Bay, right? So Avalon Bay added 382 units up near the new mall. And then these two peaks right here is the next phase, which is the actual mall. So see this beige colored? That's the original part of the mall, up by Wegmans. This sort of mustard color here, that's Avalon Bay. So that's residential, that's commercial, the gray in here is industrial, and then, and then the stuff on the top here, that's personal property, which we just talked about. So when you look at this from, from, from just sort of a trend, the way it rolls out, you know, we saw significant economic development and then we've seen this, this dip here. Well, you know, this isn't unexpected, and this certainly isn't cause for alarm. What you're seeing is you're seeing our, our new growth getting back to more historic levels, somewhere in the 30 or 40 million dollar area. That does mean, though, that we aren't growing at as fast of a pace, but with any community like our size, when you see new growth, you see malls and things like that go in, it takes time for the business environment to absorb that space. You know, a lot of it's built on spec, has to be absorbed, it has to get leased out. There's still a couple of spots to be leased out in the expansion of the mall. So, so that's all playing out. But, you know, we are seeing, we are seeing, you know, that, that new growth really coming down at around $30 million. Now, one of the things that I always mention every year at this, at this hearing is, why aren't we, why aren't you see us raising a red flag or, or starting to sound the alarm? Well, because all the things that allowed this to happen is still in place. We still have developable land. We've got 100 contiguous acres of commercial industrial property down off Bartlett. We have a 50-acre parcel right next to the mall in Kimball Sand and Gravel, they're, they're winding down that mining operation. We've got some land across the street there where the ball fields are. So we know we're going to see some more economic development. What we don't know is how big and how fast and when. But the good news is we have the capacity and, and the raw materials to, to make that happen. However, as we plan our budget for fiscal 19, one of the things that you're going to hear us talk about when we get to that stage in December, where we do our financial trend monitoring, is we're going to be talking about, you know, this number here, whoops, this number here, it's going to be 30 million or less. We don't see anything in the pipeline right now. As I said, we're, the, the industries are absorbing the commercial space that we've built, that's, that's existing right now, and until that gets fully leased out and we get the next big push, you know, that does have an implication, at least for next year in terms of what we anticipate having for additional revenues. Does anybody have any questions regarding this new growth trend? I know you've seen this every year, and I know I've explained it to you, but since we have, I've taken advantage of the fact that we have audience members here for something else on the agenda, but I figure I take the time to explain this. So this is a slide everybody's most interested in, is what's going to happen to the single, single-family home values and what does that mean for their taxes? So initially, leading into town meeting, we do a projection based on current values, and we're always very careful to add that disclaimer very prominently, that the projected tax impact is based on values for single-family homes, not, not changing. Anybody who has either tried to sell, not tried, who sold a home, because you're not, if you didn't sell it, you're not trying very hard. If you're trying to buy a home, then you know just how tight the market is right now in Northborough. Inventory is very short, things are getting on the market, they're going above asking price, and nothing is lingering on that market unless it's poorly, poorly priced. So right now, the average single-family home is going up from about $408,000 to about And so just by virtue of that, so that's about, it's a $13,900 increase in value. Well, that means it's going to have an impact on the single-family home taxes. Now, we've got a few things that are operating in our favor as we set the tax rate, and that is we've had a lower, a slightly lower assessment for Algonquin based on their final state aid. We've had a little bit more state aid, but our assessments went up, it's, it's negligible, it's about, it's, it's just under $9,000. The big place that we've been able to pull some resources to help stabilize and reduce the tax impact, which you know is one of the primary goals of the Board of Selectmen, is in our overlay account, and this is for, and these are for abatements, tax abatements and things of that nature. So we get to the point where we set the tax rate now, we know where we are in terms of abatements, and Dan Brogie, our principal assessor, can speak to this if you have questions. But we budget a certain amount for abatements, but now that we know it's going to be less, we're able to apply that, those tax dollars now, or those resources to suppressing and holding the tax impact down. So bottom line is the final tax impact for fiscal 18 is going to be $242 in the average single-family home. If you own a condominium, I have good news and bad news. The good news is your value of your asset is up. Bad news is your tax bill will probably go up a little bit more based on that increase in value. So we always like, again, to give a little bit of context to what we're talking about, and you can see sort of three distinct areas. Down here, if these data points went back further, this was sort of what we needed as a typical tax increase back in 2009, 2010, in order to support our schools, our public safety, our DPW, all of, all of the business that the town does. And here is the recessionary period. Now, we had two things working in our favor in that period. We had depressed home values. I say that's good in our favor from a tax impact standpoint, but depressed home values, and we also had, if you go back to that chart, the single largest commercial industrial development going on in the town. So that is what was able to keep these taxes down. Now, a lot of times you hear people say, boy, you guys, you have this big mall, you have all this economic development, where did all that money go? Well, I'm going to tell you where all that money went. All that money went to not increase the taxes during the worst recession in 80 years. And so we took the taxes in from, from the mall and we didn't raise the residential taxes to the limits of Prop 2 and 1/2, which is an artificial limit to begin with. The result is we created levy capacity. So the town of Northborough has not taxed to the max under Prop 2 and 1/2, and we haven't for, for many years. So those tax dollars came in from that economic development, we, we used those tax dollars and we did not increase the residential tax bills much during this period. Now, the next phase that you're seeing here, this is artificially high right here, because this is the Lincoln Street building project. So we went to the taxpayers, we asked them for debt exclusion to increase taxes for that project. 80% approval at the ballot, that's what this is. And now you're starting to get into these data points where this is really what we need. Absent significant new state aid or significant economic development, we need about a $240, $250 increase in an average single-family home tax bill to sustain a 3%, 3.5% increase in budget. So that's kind of where we're, we're going to see us trending for the foreseeable future, and you know this from the five-year financial forecast, you know this from the trend analysis. We, we were talking about these data points back here. So everybody knew it was coming. But again, we have potential, we keep hoping that at some point the state is going to get out of this quagmire and start generating revenue and, and this is the important part, actually pass it down to the municipalities. Because as you know, when they get additional revenue, first of all, they've been off the mark, they've been off the mark for the last several years that have required mid-year cuts in, in state programs, in aid accounts for several years in a row, because they're overly optimistic about their revenue marks, they don't hit them, and then they have to, then they have to backstep. Well, what does that tell you? First of all, they're not hitting their marks, which means we're not going to see any appreciable increase in our state aid for the foreseeable future. And when it does come back, when state aid does actually hit that, say, a 4% increase in terms of their revenue, they aren't very likely, based on historical data, to share that proportionally with us. Their revenues might go up 4%, and what do we see? 1%, 1.5%. Well, if our revenues are going up from state aid, 1%, 1.5%, and our budget's going up 3%, 3.5%, and 80% of our, our revenue comes from local taxes, then we know that that's where it's getting shouldered. And that's why, and why we talk about tax classification as being an important part of our economic development strategy, because we look at this long-term. We're in it for the long haul. So 10-year average, $178 increase in the average single-family home tax bill, that's pretty modest and pretty reasonable. This historically has been our top 10 taxpayers. You know the success story that I love to relay is, we started adding folks into this list and we weren't losing anybody off the bottom of the list, and people were getting concerned because they didn't see those large employers and they wanted to know what happened to them. Are they having trouble? No, they're not. So we expanded our top 10 list to top 15 list. Now, my favorite thing about this list is about eight or nine of these businesses either located in Northborough or expanded their operations in Northborough in the last eight to 10 years. So that's a long-term strategy, that's a long-term partnership, that's real growth. That's that 80% commercial industrial, 20% residential shifting to 75, 25. The latest is number 13 here, 920 LLC, Northborough Crossing 2. That's that second phase of the mall that we just talked about, the Margaritas, St. V's, that, that, that growth that came in. We lost one, though, that fell off. We didn't lose it, it didn't go anywhere, it just fell off the list. And that is the Gutierrez Company that owns the single, I mentioned earlier, the single largest 100-acre contiguous parcel of industrial zone land off of Bartlett Street. So that land's still there, it didn't go anywhere. It will develop at some point, and so we have that capacity. But in the meantime, you're seeing all of these, you know, all of these businesses staying, expanding and, and thriving in Northborough. This chart, we like to provide, because it's really kind of brings everything together in one slide. It shows you the different values, or rather, the different classifications of property, residential, open space, commercial, gives you a four, a five-year look back of the change in those values, shows you what the tax rate has done, and this is an interesting line here, this is the average single-family home, $375,000 back in fiscal 14. Look at these, look at these jumps here. This is about a 3.4% increase, which coincidentally is about what the increase is for the average single-family home's tax bill. It's about a 3.4% increase. So going from 7, 7,098 down to, up to 73,40. Before I close up and I hand over to, to Dan Brogie, a couple of key points that we do want people to take away from the presentation, and that's that our total valuation is up, that's a good, a good thing and a positive trend. We are experiencing positive new growth, albeit at a lower rate compared to the recent past, but again, that all makes sense to us and, and it isn't unexpected or unanticipated. The key for us is when you look at those top 10 taxpayers, that, that slide I showed you, you've got commercial, so you have a mall, right? That's the single largest taxpayer, but within the mall you have diversity. We've got biotech, we've got transportation, we've got R&amp;D, we've got, so we have all different facets of the economy in Northborough. And that's great, because that means we don't have any single one employer that we're beholden to, where if something happens in their industry or they decide to move and they pack up and they leave, we don't have this massive gaping hole in our tax base. We can sustain, you know, any one of these businesses coming or going through the national, the natural business cycle, and so that diversified tax base is really something that is a great asset to the town of Northborough. The last bullet here, last but not least, the tax impact on the average single-family home remains affordable, and I would add stable. Everything that we do is laid out, our plans, our growth, our budgets, our investments in our infrastructure and our equipment, and we do this logically so that we don't have wild swings in our, in our taxes. And that's through good planning and good execution. So once again, this year, I think we've explained the increase, how it came about, and you'll get another talk in December when we project out, what, what does this look like moving forward? We always look back 10 years and we try to look forward at least five. Really, realistically, anything more than a couple of years forward, given the political nature of what we do, it's, it's very difficult. I always say forecasting is, is great. Yes, it's math, and there are different techniques that you can use, rolling averages, linear regression analysis, all that stuff is great, but if underlying all of that are political assumptions that you don't have a good handle on, we all know, just, I just said, the state revenues may go up 5%, that does not mean you should count on a 5% increase in your state aid. It's not how it works. But again, we've been able to maintain that stability in, in Northborough, and it's something I think the Board is very proud of. So unless anybody has any questions on anything that I covered, I'm going to turn the mic over to Dan Brogie, who's going to run you through the, oh, I'm sorry, through the chair?
Just real quickly.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just real quickly, John, you mentioned 40B a while back. What's our status on that right now? Where do we stand with?
Okay, for, for those of you that don't, aren't familiar with 40B, 40B is the Affordable Housing statute that allows a developer to come into town and essentially override your zoning and your housing density to put in units, as long as 25% of them are quote-unquote "affordable." Northborough's in a very good position right now, because when Avalon Bay came in, those 382 units we talked about, that came in as what's known as a friendly 40B. That means the town partnered with a very good corporation, Avalon Bay, they designated 25% of their units as affordable units, and again, I don't make up the rules, but in accordance with the statute, by virtue of them being rental properties, then all 382 units qualify as affordable. Now, why is that important? That's important, because if you reach a threshold of 10% of your housing as, as qualifying under statute, Master of Law, Chapter 40B, you do not have to take what are often referred to as unfriendly developments. In other words, you'll see where developers go into a residential neighborhood and shoehorn a condominium complex into a neighborhood that's out of character, and oftentimes the neighbors will be very upset about this. Well, because Northborough worked proactively with Avalon Bay, and we have those units in here, in, they count towards our 10%, we now can do affordable housing on our terms. So we've got a few things going on right now, you know, downtown, a couple of historic buildings next to Trinity Church, the old General Store, those are being renovated in a partnership with the Northborough Affordable Housing Corp. in Habitat for Humanity, partnering with some community preservation funds that were appropriated at town meeting to develop those as affordable units. They make sense there. In that case, we actually were able to save a couple of historic buildings in town and maintain that facade, provide affordable housing and add to our stock. So, so that's where we are. We're able, at, at this point, to be able to continue to do projects like that, that preserve and add to the character of the neighborhoods and don't detract. And again, that's the benefit of, of planning and thinking forward on these things. Many communities, if you don't, if you didn't do something like Avalon Bay, you would never, it would be very difficult for you to get to your 10% adding two or three condominium units in a complex, you know, over, over years. And many communities find themselves in that position, but, but luckily, we're not one of them.
Great.
Hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Don?
John, what are we using as the average value of a single-family home?
I'll come back. Average value, $422,078. It was 408,144 last year. So, it's about a 3.4% increase. Again, average single-family home, if you have condominiums, they're up around 4%, Dan, is that about right? So, again, it, it has to do with how the market's trending. I gotta tell you, when, when the real estate market, when the bubble burst, we lost about 13% roughly on our single-family homes. We've gained all that back, and now we're blazing into, into, into new territory. If you read the papers, you'll see some of our neighboring communities have had significant tax impacts, primarily driven by valuation increases. So, the single-family homes are just so hot that, that they're going up. You know, and they're going up disproportionately, which means, again, the good news is, for most people, their single-largest asset is appreciating nicely in value. The downside is, you gotta pay taxes on that. And unless you're at a position to sell your home and realize that increase, you get that you're paying taxes. But just think about this, would you rather have your home value plummeting or appreciating at a nice steady pace of about 3% a year? And, again, it speaks a lot to the, it speaks a lot to the value of Northborough, that our home values are very, our homes are very desirable, because our schools are good, our public safety is good, parks are, are, are good, you know, and so, we're a desirable community. That all works to drive up home values. It doesn't hurt that we have a great location as well, so. Does that answer your question, Don?
Yep, thank you.
So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Brogie and let him run you through the scenarios.
So, again, as John mentioned, there are three items you'll be voting on tonight. And although we're not really here to set the tax rate tonight, ultimately, the decisions you make will determine the tax rate. So, the big one, again, normally is, for most towns, is whether or not they're going to adopt classification or shift, you know, split the tax rate and shift the burden from residential or put more of the burden on the commercial-industrial taxpayer. You can see by illustration here, obviously, as John's gone over, the values have gone up a bit. If you had a single rate, you have that $17.39 tax rate, resulting in the bills for the average values of those categories. However, if you do even a small shift, you can see what happens. You see the, on the single-family home, bill goes down $122, because you, you lower the rate a little bit, and, and the, the commercial taxpayer, you know, bears the brunt of that, that savings for the residential taxpayer. So, again, it's, it's, it's a more of an issue or a decision you have to make on, you know, tax equity and what the statement is you want to make out there in the marketplace. What do you want to do for your economic development? Whether you want to, you know, again, it's, it's not very pro-economic development, that's for sure. So, again, that's the split-rate scenario, and that's, you know, generally the biggest one. The next one, oh, sorry, residential exemption. Really doesn't apply here. There are only 13 communities, 13 or maybe 14, that have adopted this. Generally, there are communities that have a very low rate of owner-occupied property. So, the Cape, or I always bring up Nantucket, because they've got a very large one. Again, people don't live there, and they're, you know, they're summer homes, and it's for owner-occupied properties only. The other scenario would be somewhere like Boston or maybe Somerville, where they have a lot of apartments, right? They're non-owner-occupied properties. So, what you can see it does, this has no bearing on the commercial taxpayer. It just shifts the burden within the residential class. So, someone who's got a lower-valued property, 300,000, say, they save a little money, you know, because, again, what it does is, it, it, it's, the calculation's based on the average residential value, not the average single-family value. So, it's all the, what we call Class 1 properties. That's apartments, vacant land, everything, you just get that number. Everybody gets the same exemption on their property, that $39,000 exemption. So, someone's got a $300,000 property, still gets the 30, you know, the $39,000. The guy at the 5, with the $500,000 property, he essentially pays extra. Essentially, it's a surcharge. And then, we did it for illustration purposes. You took the average single-family value, you know, the difference is only 20, it's $24, so it's almost a wash. But there is a break-even we do every year, and this year it came out at $409,000. So, anyone with a value over 409 actually pays extra with the exemption. If you're below that, you start saving money. So, again, you're just shifting, and, again, no bearing on the commercial taxpayer. This is all within the residential class. So, again, not many people do this. I think there are only 13 communities, and it doesn't seem like it really would apply here. And then, finally, the small commercial exemption. I don't know how many people do this. There aren't very many. Again, this is a, shifting the burden just amongst the commercial-industrial tax base. And you can give an exemption, as it says, up to 10% of the, of the value. And it would save, you know, some, some money on the, on the small commercial property owner, but at the expense of the large commercial, you know, property taxpayers. So, again, it's what, what is, what is you want to put out in the marketplace as far as economic development? You're trying to attract, you know, development, and certainly, large development, big taxpayers. And, you know, it seems, you know, kind of maybe trying to what we're trying to do. So, with that said, the board does recommend that we maintain a single tax rate, do not adopt the residential exemption, nor do we adopt the small commercial exemption. About it. Any questions, or anybody have a question?
Question? I just have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
Just, and it's just out of curiosity, for the small commercial exemption, you mentioned that the exemption is to the benefit of the property owner, not the business owner.
Right.
Who's occupying that property.
So, if you're a tenant, you may not.
I'm just curious, do we have any, any data as to how many small businesses are owner?
I don't. I don't. So, certainly, there are, you know, and they would benefit. But if you're in a strip mall, and you're a tenant in a strip mall, you know, or something like that.
Sure, right.
You're not, you're not benefiting for that. And that's what it is, you get a lot, a lot of small buildings, say, on Main Street. Most of them are just tenant-occupied. There are some that are occupied.
Yep.
But, again, then you want, if you want a larger commercial taxpayer in town, why am I paying extra, right? So, that's all you're doing, shifting the burden, so.
Thank you.
All right?
Jeff?
I guess, just a comment to get the discussion going. I think probably the, for me, the most telling slide that we had up here, I think it was number eight. If, maybe if you can go back to that, which hopefully, yeah, this one. I think you look at this, and you look at, you know, the period 2012 to 2013, when we're seeing significant growth. And, and there was, there was a reason for that, and I think there, you know, a good part of that was the fact that we need to have a single tax rate. It allowed us to go out and, you know, recruit, you know, opportunities for the town. It's a big selling point. And I think if you, you know, as you jump forward to 2018, and you look, you know, obviously, you're not going to have that kind of growth year after year. I mean, we'd look like Framingham in, you know, a couple of years. But, you know, we do have, you know, other properties out there. We've got, down by Bartlett Street, as John said, Kimball's, Gutierrez Properties. And if we want to recruit the right kinds of businesses, I think one of the best tools we can have is a single tax rate. The other item that John mentioned, talked about briefly, was the diversity of the commercial base. That, to me, is extremely important, because, you know, if there's any one particular hit, like a hit in, say, high-tech, or something like that, I, I know what it was like when companies like Digital went out. And, I mean, that devastated places, you know, like Marlboro.
Right.
So, you know, not only do we want to be able to, to attract the right kind of businesses, but also, you know, a variety of different types of entities. So, you know, for that reason, I would strongly support a single tax rate.
I agree with Jeff. You know, history aside with this issue, I've never seen anything compelling that would make me want to vote otherwise and adopt a split tax rate. I believe, I think we talked about this last year, Worcester, I think, at one point. I'm not sure what their status is now, but had a split tax rate. Did not work for them. Still do? Still do? But, you know, as Jeff said, I think, you know, we, there's, we want Northborough to look a certain way. And I think, right now, we're achieving what we want to achieve, and we're going about it the right way. And I think a split tax rate is not the message that we want to give to potential businesses in town, so. I agree.
Thank you. Bill?
Yes, I mean, Dan said it, and John said it, you know, north, keep a Northborough a desirable place to live and keep your values, your homes up. And, you know, we talk about, you know, promoting business and bringing economic development to the town. And we've been talking about that, and brought in, you know, the mall and, and all the industry in Northborough. And it's because we have a single tax rate. It's desirable for the businesses to move here. You know, it's, we open, with open arms, we want to bring in business and try to promote that economic development. So, I'm for the single tax rate.
Thank you. Don?
And I've always been a opponent of the single tax rate. We're trying to bring in business, not try to get businesses to leave the town in Northborough. So, obviously, I believe in the single tax rate.
Jeff, just one more quick comment. I think the other thing that's really kind of takeaway on this whole thing is that, you know, even a significant shift that would, you know, really be a big hit to the commercial base has a relatively minor impact on the average homeowner. You know, so it's, while it sounds good, it really, it's almost a negligible effect on, you know, the, like I said, the average homeowner in Northborough. But at the same time, it can be, you know, a significant hit to the, to the commercial owner. So, it really, you know, doesn't make a hell of a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I, I'm in agreement on this, on maintaining the single tax rate. In part, it's a fairness issue to some extent. Typically, commercial and industrial just simply don't place the same demand on town services as residential property owners do, in terms of, you know, they're, they're not sending children to school, for the most part, which is the single biggest expenditure in town that's supported by tax dollars. So, I think there's certainly many benefits to keeping the single tax rate and encouraging businesses to come here. And as Jeff just observed, there's not a very substantial benefit to the residential taxpayer, even if we were to attempt to shift some of the, some of the taxes to the commercial and industrial side. So, I think we have a unanimous agreement there. For the record, I'd just like to note, we have letters received from Northborough Industrial Development Commission, from Chairman Mark Donahue, as they do every year. They continue to advocate for the single tax rate. And likewise, the Quarter 9 Area Chamber of Commerce, President Karen Chapman and Chairman of the Board, Mary Simone, again, both advocating for a single tax rate to encourage business development opportunities in, in the Quarter 9 area. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to comment on this matter? Sure.
You talked about the 100 acres that are available.
I'm sorry, I just want to be sure we got a microphone. You got it? Okay, thank you, Terry. Yep, go ahead, Tim.
You talked about the 100 acres that are available out in your Charlotte, and I've been reading about Amazon, doing some research for, or Marlboro making a bid to Amazon. I would just wonder if that parcel of land was in any way involved with that, or if that's been considered for the recruitment of somebody like Amazon, or Amazon directly?
John? Through the chair, I'm happy to reply to that. We don't have, we don't have the land to bring Amazon to Northborough, and neither do our neighbors.
But they're talking Marlboro, Northwoods.
I know. So, we did work with our neighbors, though, Marlboro, Westboro, Southboro, to pitch an area spread out between the towns that's available, that, that might serve their needs. So, we know it's a long, a long stretch. However, we do think it's always important, when we can, to market the town and to get our information out there, because if not Amazon, we may, we may catch the attention of another employer or another major development that, that would like to locate here. So, so, yeah, we are part of that. We're always looking at those, for those opportunities.
Yeah, if you talk about the partnerships in Amazon, it'd be terrific to have in town. Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to close the public hearing with the Board of Assessors for the purpose of discussing the valuation of each class of property, the minimum residential factor, and the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property, residential, open space, commercial and industrial, and any, and of personal property. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Terry, none, all in favor? Very good. Hearing is closed. Yes, Don?
I move the board vote to maintain a uniform tax rate for all classes of property at a factor of 1, to oppose the implementation of a residential exemption, and to oppose the implementation of a small commercial exception. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
If I may, just, I'd like to recognize a couple of folks for the boards. We have Sue Reagan from our assessor's office is here tonight. But I really want to focus on Jason Little, our town accountant. Jason is instrumental in putting the presentation together and filing the recapitulation sheet that has all the data, you know, the accounting information, in addition to the values that Dan puts in, that, that basically is what's needed for the Department of Revenue to allow us to set our taxes. But, but Jason does a great job, and I just wanted to make sure that he gets some acknowledgement here tonight.
Great. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next item, it's past the hour of 7:15. Board discussion regarding medical marijuana to discuss new information about the opt-out option as it relates to medical marijuana. John, would you care to introduce us?
Just to set the table for you.
Sure.
So, at your meeting on October 16th, the board took up the, the discussion regarding medical and recreational marijuana. From a policy standpoint, had a discussion about how you want to approach this. Out of that meeting came a clear direction that was communicated both to the planning board, but also to town council. And that direction was that the board wishes to opt-out of all marijuana-related activities, both medical and recreational, including the sale of accessories, and also to make sure that as part of a draft bylaw, that there's a provision that would effectively eliminate the potential for age-use variance. So, in your packet and for your consideration this evening are two draft bylaws that council believes accomplishes these things. Now, as you, as you recall, they're basically very similar. One is a zoning bylaw, and one is a general bylaw, because, given some of the ambiguities in the state, town council wanted to make sure that we have belts and suspenders by adopting both a general and a zoning bylaw. But if you look at these drafts, they're reformatted, and the language is essentially made to mirror definitions and so forth. It's made to mirror mass general law, so that we're not out there on our own. But these drafts, as submitted for your consideration, would, at least our understanding as of today, would accomplish what the board has stated its policy direction is. And I say "as of today" because, as you know, there's still a lot of information that's still unfolding. In particular, the Cannabis Control Commission is being pegged with a lot of questions by a lot of communities in terms of what their intentions are, both their timeline and with regard to their regulations. So, but at this point in time, this is a good draft, I think sends a very clear, explicit message of where the board stands on, on these matters. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the, the information in the packet for the drafts.
Bill?
John, we're not the only community that's going through this. I mean, is other communities taking the same approach as us? Do you know, or?
Yeah, my understanding originally was about 100, 101 communities that had filed for moratoriums. There's in, some articles in the Mass Municipal Association's publication called The Beacon. And they talk about 85 communities now with, you know, have outstanding moratoriums. And the articles in The Beacon talk a lot about the questions that the Mass Municipal Association, which is the lobbying arm of municipalities in general, has outlined our concerns and our issues and made those known to the Cannabis Control Commission, the CCC. So, we're all sort of waiting to see how things unfold. Control Commission, the CCC. Um, so, uh, we're all sort of waiting to see how things unfold. Um, the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency has submitted written testimony at these listening sessions that the, uh, the Cannabis Control Commission has held. And the big question that we have is the big question that you had at the last meeting, which is, when are you going to do the regulations? What's the impact, uh, moving forward? I'm not aware at this point of any community proceeding with a special town meeting. In fact, uh, the only thing I've read in the papers are several communities are adopting a moratorium. Natick was probably the last one that I read about, uh, to do, to do that. So, they've adopted a moratorium to protect themselves and to allow some more time for, for this stuff to, to unfold.
I believe their moratorium extends through December of 2018.
December of 2018, correct.
Yep.
Yep.
Leslie?
Okay, so a couple of things. Um, it sounds from some material that we got in preparation for this meeting, that the moratoriums are being respected for the most part. It was interesting reading about that. I couldn't, it's hard to kind of decipher that a little bit, but it sounded as if those moratoriums are being respected.
Yeah. The Attorney General's Office is very clear that, that they stand behind the moratoriums. Um, that is a, that is a time-tested and true approach when faced with new or changing landscape, how you hit the pause button and are able to address it constructively, rather than with a knee-jerk reaction to something. Um, the comment was made that, uh, you know, that that, like anything, can be potentially challenged or questioned. Um, and so, that's always a possibility. But the Attorney General's Office is pretty clear that, that, uh, they feel the moratoriums are in place, and they are continuing to approve them. As I said, town of Natick just instituted a moratorium. So, um, uh, this stuff's going to need to unfold. I think that the two, the two key points to take away from, uh, what you have in your packets and where we are as a community at this point is, number one, the board is very clear about what its intentions are with regard to recreational marijuana. Um, we don't want it in town, uh, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that, uh, that the community is protected from, from that. Uh, and two, we are in a holding pattern. This is the best information we have at this moment. Um, my recommendation to the board at this point is, we have the draft bylaws. As you know, we are working on the town meeting warrant for April, uh, of next year. We're actually working on that now. So, these are on the warrant as a placeholder, as drafted by town council. If anything changes, then this would come back to the board for a conditional consideration and/or, you know, potential action. But at this point in time, uh, I, I wouldn't recommend doing anything else other than where we are at this stage, unless the board wants to change their mind about allowing, uh, allowing recreational marijuana in town.
Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I, you know, there's no conceivable advantage in jumping the gun on this. Um, you know, we've, as John said, we've got the draft. You know, we've got the potential, you know, articles written. Um, you know, waiting to see what happens, you know, while, while we have time, you know, makes sense. I mean, it's, so I think you put so well last time, uh, Jason was, you know, we don't want to be, necessarily want to be first. You know, we want to have the best one. And, you know, by waiting, I think we keep our options open, you know, if we have to tweak these articles, depending on, you know, what comes along in the interim. Um, so, I, again, I, I see no advantage in jumping the gun on a town meeting. I think, you know, it makes perfect sense to use the time that we have and, you know, and, and get this as, as good as we can. So...
Don?
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with the drafts for the time being, and as we keep them open and knowing if more comes along, that we can change them or need to change them, we do. Um, I was just wondering, the planning board, have they taken a vote on this yet?
My understanding is that they're, they're going to be taking this up at their meeting on the 15th, correct, Kathy?
Yes, and, and actually, at the, the meeting following our meeting, October 17th, the board voted for in favor to, to go forward with the same, you know, articles that, that the selectmen would be proposing. You know, banning recreational marijuana, medical marijuana, and the, um, uh, any accessories, and then also to the zoning bylaw adding that no variants can be applied for.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Okay, so just to reiterate, assuming that the, there is respect being given to the moratoriums, then we should not have anything to worry about in terms of needing to set up a special town meeting, because the moratorium goes beyond, uh, the April 1st. Am I saying that correctly? Right? Um, and also, do we have complete confidence that if there was going to be a change, that we would be given sufficient notice, that if we did need to set up a special town meeting, we'd have the number of days needed to do that?
Right. If, if I may, the number one question that's been posed by every legal council, town council in the state, and every planning agency in town, is to the Cannabis Control Commission, uh, tell us what your intentions are, so then we can act accordingly. And again, I'll stress this, you know, the Cannabis Control Commission is set up and, and primarily composed of, of individuals who did not support recreational marijuana. They're in place to regulate this effectively. And so, they're not there to run roughshod over a community. So, as soon as they get themselves organized, they just hired an executive director, uh, and they've put in their budget requests, and as soon as they get themselves in a position where they can start moving forward, they're going to get, I would anticipate, they're going to need to give some pretty clear direction about what they're doing, so that we would then act accordingly.
Okay.
So, until that happens, it's, you know, it's a lot of speculation. But with, without a doubt, that is the, the primary question that, that's out there. And the only, the only entity that can answer that is the commission, and they're just forming, they're just getting themselves together. They hired a director, and, you know, so I anticipate, we're going to get some more information in the coming months.
Bill?
I think we're ahead of the curve, so, with this information, which is good that we requested, and, uh, I think if we stay on top of it and we know if we need to do anything different or tweak anything, as Jeff said, we can. So, I feel comfortable now.
Through the chair, if I can just make one comment. One of the things that we're trying to stress is making sure that we have a, a, the time to have a thoughtful and deliberate policy discussion, so that we move forward, um, from a position of understanding and strength. A number of communities, the question's been posed to me as I make my way around town, of, you know, why don't we just do what one of our neighboring communities done? Why are we recre, you know, why are we doing something different? Well, what they did, they did the best they could at a snapshot in a moment in time. Well, right now, and at that moment in time, you could not ban medical marijuana dispensaries. So, they had to, they, they chose to ban the recreational if and when it became available, and they had to regulate and zone and put that medical marijuana somewhere in the community. Well, under the current, uh, law, the understanding is that those medical facilities are going to be able to sell recreational marijuana, unless the town does something to prohibit it. And again, the exact process for that is unknown, because it's up to the Cannabis Control Commission to lay that process and those regulations. So, those communities that move forward quickly, I think they, they believe they acted in the best interests of their community. We chose to put a moratorium in place to let this unfold. And it's not a case of, well, we did it right, they did it wrong. I, I think it just speaks to our approach with most things that we do, which is, we want to make sure we have time to have a, a good discussion, and we have good information, and we act accordingly. And, and frankly, that's where we are. I, in retrospect, would never, wouldn't recommend that the town have done anything differently than we have done to get us to the point where we are today. I think all the boards and committees have acted thoughtfully and put the town in the best position to make a policy decision and implement it and be successful. And that's our goal. I think the thing that this board has done, that's probably the most important, is, because you've made it clear to the residents, who want to know where you stand on this, where you stand. And I think that's been the big unknown, and that's no longer unknown.
Uh, I think, um, I would like to just mention that, um, the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, which has been following this issue very closely, uh, has participated in some of the, um, uh, public input sessions, um, conducted by the Cannabis Control Commission. And, uh, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has sent a letter dated October 26th, uh, to the Cannabis Control Commission, um, asking them specifically to please give guidance on their outlook regarding the moratorium and the application, acceptance, and licensing dates, because there are so many communities that are, um, concerned about that and wanting clear information, so that they know how to proceed and on what timeline they need to proceed. Um, the Cannabis Control Commission has indicated that, uh, they're drafting their regulations now, and they expect that first draft to be issued in mid-December. I would find that remarkable, actually, if, if they actually met that date. But they've stated a, an intent to have the first draft available by mid-December, and Cannabis, I'm sorry, the Central Mass Regional Planning has asked for an answer to this question concerning the moratorium, um, before those regulations are produced. So, they're, they're looking for, for, for a response from Cannabis Control Commission on a relatively near-term, uh, timeline. Uh, there's, um, just a couple of clarifications, I think, uh, I want to make about the language of the bylaw, which the people at home don't have available to them at the moment. Um, there's essentially two sections to the bylaw proposals. The first, um, addresses non-medical marijuana establishments in all its forms, including marijuana accessories, um, a complete prohibition of all of that. The second item addresses, um, uh, what are referred to as medical marijuana treatment centers, and that phrase actually comes from a definition that's in, uh, Chapter 94I, which is a section of the general laws that will deal specifically with medical marijuana use. Um, that phrase may seem, uh, a little ambiguous, medical marijuana treatment center, but we have checked and verified that, um, according to the definitions of that section, that actually refers to, um, all, uh, all activities: cultivation, processing, dispensing, everything. So, um, there's no omission of mention of certain activities in that clause. Um, so between those two sections, that should address everything that we're looking for. And then, in addition, as John mentioned, uh, for the zoning bylaw, there's the additional, uh, treatment of prohibition of a use variance to override these provisions. So, um, that's the essence of that. Any other questions, concerns? We continue to follow this issue. We continue to speak with town council to get, uh, updates. Um, I think, as, as John mentioned, again, the fact that the Attorney General is continuing to issue approvals of moratoriums, uh, I think speaks very clearly as to the Attorney General's position on the effect of the moratorium relative to this. But we still do need, or would like to see some clarification from Cannabis Control Commission, uh, about that as well. So... Kathy Jubert, Town Planner?
Jason, I just wanted to mention that the planning board is meeting next on November 15th, uh, next Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it's one of their, you know, a regular meeting. Um, they'll be talking about, uh, medical and recreational marijuana, the same information that you have this evening. Uh, it's not a public hearing, but it is a public meeting. And then they'll be scheduling, um, public hearings. We usually always start those in, uh, January. Um, and I think we're also maybe going to look to do a joint meeting, um, with the board, I mean, a joint hearing with the board of selectmen, given that it, you know, it'll be all the same people.
Same.
But I just wanted to let people know that the planning board will be meeting next week.
Planning board next week, that's Wednesday, November 15?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Here in this room?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much, Kathy. Uh, any other comments, questions? Nope? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much. Reports?
Yes.
Bill?
Hey, Kathy, I wanted to thank you for the, uh, the update on the development in Northborough. I like that. It gives us all the update of things going on in the town, whether it's industrial or different buildings and things going on, and gives us an update, which is great. I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, Saturday, the 21st, I had the opportunity to observe a portion of the assessment center for hiring a new captain for the fire department, and, uh, it was, it was, it was great. It had a video of a, a real house in Northborough on River Street, and it showed the house, and then it showed it on fire, and then, as the fire progressed, and, you know, the captains were asked, you know, what should they do? Because they're basically, the fire chief would be, um, out of the firehouse up in New Hampshire, and the guys had, the captains would have to deal with running the whole ship. It was great.
The chief always has to be out of town when you run these things.
But it was good. It was, it was nice to see. So, and they had three great candidates. Um, and then, um, last Wednesday, the 25th, they did a ribbon cutting at Jimmy John's, uh, sub shop up at the mall. It was great. A family-run, uh, organization, a young boy, Joey, and his mother and father run it. It's a, it's a nice operation, and I hope them all the, the best in the, with the, uh, the business. So, it was great. Free sandwiches, so, it's nice. Of course, you know me with the food. I loved it, so... That's my report. Oh, no! Sorry about that. Um, the interview committee, uh, met this evening, and I move the board vote to appoint Paul Taglaferry as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a partial three-year term.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
And then, I move the board vote to appoint Jack Shop to the Board of Library Trustees for a partial three-year term.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
That's my report.
Excellent. We have him back.
Yes. I was going to say that.
Yeah.
It's cause you have a little over.
Yeah, yeah, we couldn't get a replacement, so we, we had to go back to the wells.
Excellent. Well, thank you. That's great.
Okay. On Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Day luncheon. It was a, a great event, um, thanking the American Legion for helping to put it on, the bistro that did a marvelous job with the food, all the volunteers that helped serve it, but especially the veterans that came and, um, did such, or did such a service for this country. And it was nice to be able to have them come and be honored. Um, and they seemed to really appreciate it. John spoke and did a great job. So, it was just, it was a nice occasion, and I think that it just commemorated what Veterans Day is all about and why it was, and why it happens now. So, so that was a nice day. And we also finally started the building committee for the fire station, um, with the chief and the other committee members. And I was actually elected chair of that committee, and we'll be meeting again.
Congratulations.
We'll all be meeting again soon. So, anyway, but that was nice, and it's nice to be underway. We had a tour of the station. We saw the multiple fires, uh, file cabinets that are anywhere and everywhere throughout the station. And a little lack of room for some equipment, but just a little bit. So, so anyway, the next step will be to hire the consultant that will come in, and his first, um, job will be basically to decide if there's enough room in the location, if there's room to expand and take some property to expand, or are we going to be looking to put this on another site, depending on the chief meeting with him and talking about what the goals are for the fire department in the future. As the fire department was built in 1972, is that right?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. And it was built for a call fire department. Um, there's a lot of needs that aren't being met at, at this time. But in, something very positive, though, the fire station, when you look at it, doesn't look too bad at all, because they've done a great job of maintaining it and taking care of it. So, other than finding file cabinets everywhere. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Don. Leslie?
Okay, um, I wanted to, uh, mention again that the Northborough Helping Hands is continuing their coat drive, uh, for sizes, top, or I think through teen. And the drop-off is at any of the schools in town, including St. Bernadette's, through November 13th. So, please, go through your closets, and, and actually, I'm sure even larger sizes would be appreciated as well. Um, and Kathy, uh, while you're here, I did want to ask you, uh, again, if there is any reply at all to your second, uh, September 8th letter to the landlord for the Pierce Oil Station, Pierce Gas Station property.
We've actually, at, um, staff, we had a development review meeting with them about just a week or so ago.
Okay.
Um, and they were, um, asking for input, uh, as far as what we would like, you know, as a community, what we would like to see at that site. So, we reviewed, you know...
Start with the mowing, you said?
And they did. They did. I believe, I believe it's been mowed. If, if, um, it was today.
Oh, today?
Yes. Um, so I, um, I actually think, I, I think I saw it on Saturday, that it, that it had been mowed. So, um, so that was very, you know, exciting.
Exciting.
And, um, so anyways, we, you know, so we went through the zoning with them, and, um, um, they, you know, had a few scenarios, but it was very, very, um, you know, very preliminary on their part. So...
Okay.
Um, you know, we let them know, are open to meet with them again. Um, you know, we let them know, are open to meet with them again, um, to discuss, you know, what the process is.
Okay. Great. I do appreciate that, because my next question was going to be what our recourse could be, you know, if, if, do they really ever have to respond to something like that? So, I'm glad that they did, that they came in, and there's some sort of process that, well, clean that up a little bit, because it's atrocious.
Yeah, both owners, there's two owners, um, and both of them were, uh, myself, um, Fred Litchfield, Town Engineer, the, and the building inspector, were the three of us that met.
Okay. I do appreciate that. That, that should help get that property cleaned up at least a little bit. Um, thank you very much. I also wanted to mention, um, to Scott Sharpentear, our DPW Director, that the resident, um, on Maynard Street, who has a new stone wall, the stone wall was rebuilt. It was something that was approved at town meeting last year. Um, you probably know this, he's absolutely elated about it. Absolutely. He thinks you are wonderful. He said that if you ever run for election, he will vote for you because you have made Northborough great again. So--
Thank you.
It was one of the funniest things I've seen. He put a picture of it on Facebook, so--
Beautiful wall.
Yeah. He's very, very happy with that.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'll have to drive by and take a look at it, but--
Made us great again?
Yes. That's what he said. So, anyway, thank you very much for completing that project. I think that's great. I also wanted to thank all of our residents and all the scouts for the scouting for food drive this past Saturday. I know that the food pantry has been down a lot as far as stock goes, and they even had pictures on Facebook showing some pretty empty shelves, so I know this helped quite a bit. Um, and all the scouts in town were involved with this, and I saw the tiniest little scouts driving around in their parents' cars, picking up bags. It was very, very cute. So, thank you again to everybody. That is, makes a huge difference, um, for our Northborough food pantry. I also wanted to mention that the Northborough-Southborough Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, um, is presenting "If Only." I noticed there's a, a paper posted on the door of Town Hall as well. It's a screening with producer, uh, James Wahlberg, Executive Director of the Mark Wahlberg Youth Foundation. It's free and open to the public, and it's taking place this Wednesday, the 8th, at the high school auditorium. Six to seven PM is a resource fair, uh, seven to eight-thirty PM is a screening, followed by an interactive discussion about drug use and addiction, featuring a panel of local experts. So I know that the, this coalition and its members are trying to spread the word to everyone to please come to this. Um, as you probably are aware, there's a lot in the news now about opioid addiction and deaths and suicides and so forth, and I think that this is probably going to be a very effective presentation, so I encourage everyone to come if they can. Um, John, I had a quick question for you. Um, a couple of comments about the letters falling off the front of the building again?
Where's Kim?
What, what's the latest with that? Because--
We're actually looking at, we were actually reviewing the, uh, the specifications this morning, um, for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do we know why this keeps happening? Is the building still settling or something, or?
No. Well, first of all, it's, it's an old building, and, and, um--
Yeah.
We've, we've had issues with this in the past.
Yeah.
Um, we've addressed it. We did a bunch of, um, we did a bunch of work behind the, um, the facade there, uh, to, to make sure that the, the water isn't penetrating in there, but what we think happened is water got in there in, in the interim between we did, when we did that work, um, and now, and so the face of it needs to be stripped down and, and redone. So, uh, that's one of the, the projects that we have before us, so--
Okay.
Yeah. Everybody says, you know, the O's falling off. I'm like, yeah, I know.
Yeah, my daughter actually--
We'll get the facilities manager right on that.
It's you, John.
Thank you, Kim.
Your overalls?
I can't get it to go up on the roof, though. That's the only thing she uses to go up on.
Too high, it's not all.
Bring the towel over.
Thank you very much. Uh, and, yeah, Bill already thanked Kathy for your development report. That's excellent.
I'd be to it.
Yes, you did. A lot of stuff going on, so that was great.
True.
It's almost a four-pager on that one. And, uh, thanks to Police Chief Liver and Fire Chief Parenti for your monthly reports. Very informative. Thank you very much. And that's my report.
Thanks, Leslie. Jeff?
This is the beauty of going last.
You have nothing to say, right?
Especially after Leslie. No. I just wanted, real quick, I wanted to thank the, uh, DPW crew for half of the storm last week. Um, I can tell you that, driving from here to, um, Bedford every day, that by far, we were in better shape than any other town I went through. And that's not by accident. It's because you guys are out there at all hours. Um, and, you know, a lot of times, I think that, yeah, really, the only time you hear about stuff, most of the time, is when it's not going as well. But I think it's important that you hear about when it is, and you guys did a heck of a job, so please thank your crew.
I will.
And that's my report.
Uh, I will piggyback onto that, Scott. Um, there was, uh, I think this was a couple of days earlier, but, uh, there was a heavy rainfall, and at the lower part of Whitney, um, in front of one of the lots that's being constructed there, apparently there was a lot of standing water on the street. Um, one of the residents next door called it in, and I'm not sure, uh, who responded to it. I think police and DPW maybe, or something. So, um, I, I take it that that situation's resolved or something? Was there an issue with the construction itself that led to that, or?
It's in the process of being resolved. There's a lot of roadside structures that are leaching basin structures and not tied into discharges. That would be one of them. So when you get large rain events like that, they're just inundated. And it was actually a couple of piggyback rain events, so it was already saturated from the first.
Okay.
Um, we do have a, a pipe solution that's being implemented now.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to, uh, mention, usually Rita Mitré is here to, uh, announce this, but, uh, she's not here this evening, so just to let people know, on Thursday, November 23rd, um, which is Thanksgiving Day, we'll have the 10th Annual Northborough Turkey Trot, which is a 5K race. Registration begins at 7:00 AM. Race starts at 8:00 AM at Z Elementary School. Um, $25 in advance, or $35 registration fee, day of the race. Um, it's been a very popular event, and an event that has actually raised quite, uh, increasing amounts of, uh, money for the Northborough Food Pantry over the years. So, 10 years in, uh, it's really a very substantial event, both in the dollars raised and the number of runners who participate. I'll thank our, uh, public safety officials in advance and DPW in advance for the work that they have to do to, uh, to manage that. If anyone's interested and needs more information, you can just Google "Northborough Turkey Trot." You'll find a Facebook page, and you'll also find a website, uh, that will give you more information and probably allow you to do your registration, if you want to register in advance. So, we thank Rita and her crew. They, uh, started this up as a small thing, and it's just grown every year, and they continue to, uh, to do it each and every year, and we really appreciate the, um, the benefit it provides to the food pantry, so. Um, and then finally, I, I would also like to thank Kathy Jubert, not only for her report tonight, but for being on top of so many different issues. Uh, not the least of which is the, uh, the, uh, marijuana opt-out issue. Kathy's been very busy trying to, uh, field that, to attend some of the public input sessions with the Cannabis Control Commission, to report to at least two different boards about the ongoing things, and kind of bring us all up to date. So just, Kathy, thank you very much. Really appreciate all the work you've done on that, so. And that concludes my report. John?
Uh, just one brief item I wanted to mention. Uh, in your mailboxes, uh, some of you may have seen it, is a memo from Ca-- uh, from Kathy Jubert to me, speaking about one more thing that, uh, she's got, uh, one more iron in the fire. Uh, we are beginning our master planning process, so, uh, I'll be appointing a master planning steering committee, uh, which has a, as most, as you would expect, has a good cross-reference. Uh, there's 15 representatives on this committee, which is about twice as big as any committee that I usually like to see, but this particular, um, endeavor requires a very broad, uh, representation of, uh, with a lot of perspectives, one of which, uh, is a member of the Board of Selectmen. So I don't need it this evening, um, but, uh, please let the chairman know if any of you are interested in serving on the master planning, uh, steering committee, uh, because we'll be making those appointments, um, shortly. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, next item, public comments. Would anyone have a public comment they'd like to offer at this time? Going once, going twice. So, thank you very much. And new business, approval execution of traffic light agreement for Northborough Crossing.
Hooray.
Fred Litchfield, Town Engineer. Hi, Fred.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for your question. Minutes?
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to give you a little status. I know that, that project was originally approved a number of years ago, um, 2006. Uh, this was always a planned event. We had lobbied for it to be done in the beginning, but the warrants just weren't met for the amount of traffic that existed in 2006 at that location, even in the, um, 10-year-out study. But we did, uh, get successfully added a condition that said if it was warranted and approved by Mass DOT in the future, it would be installed at the owner's expense. Um, and so, it is. It's been, uh, analyzed, and, um, it does meet the warrants. It has been approved by Mass DOT. The design is, I believe, complete, and the only, um, thing holding up the, uh, the ordering of the equipment is the execution of the traffic signal maintenance agreement. Um, the conduits are in the ground, so it's a relatively painless process to install. Um, the equipment has about a 16-week lead time, once it's ordered, which can happen after the traffic signal maintenance agreement is signed, and the final permit is issued by Mass DOT in Boston, which should happen in the next two weeks, so we're looking at, uh, spring. Maybe April, more likely, maybe first.
You said 16 weeks?
16 weeks on the, on the lead time, just to order the equipment. Um, the installation shouldn't take too long. Like I said, most of the infrastructure is in the ground. They'll have to cut in some loops and install the poles, and there'll be some delay, but it won't be a lot of cutting in Route 20, which is, uh, significant. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Uh, Bill?
Fred, are they going to widen that portion of the street at all? You know, for turn lanes or anything, or is it going to stay relatively the same?
Relatively close to the width that it is, yes.
Okay.
It will include, uh, signalization of Hitching Post Lane and Shops Way, that north entrance on Route 20.
That was my other question. Thank you.
Jeff?
Uh, just a comment that, it's long overdue. I mean, take your life in your hands getting out of that.
It's tricky, especially going into the holiday season. The police department does quite a job out there.
Well, it's finally coming.
Leslie?
Uh, while you're here, Fred, if it's okay, I'd like to ask a question about the other set of lights. Um, I think it's wonderful that there is a set of lights, um, at the intersection where you would go into BJ's and obviously the, the part two, part of Northborough Crossing. If you're coming down from the top, and you then want to take a left to go toward BJ's Gas or Starbucks or something, I guess on my wish list, I would love it if that was its own little turn lane, because what's happening is you have two lanes of traffic that are coming down, and there's a left arrow, so that, then there's somebody who then decides to stop, and, and is, you know, has that arrow. They have to wait for that arrow, when other people behind them really have no intention of turning left. So you have the person who is wanting to take a left, kind of going out into the intersection so people can go around them?
Right.
Is that, I don't know if that's been expressed to you before, but I find that to be an issue.
I, I've noticed that myself, and, um, because my engineering hat is always on, and looked at that intersection, and unfortunately, when the intersection was approved as part of the original design for the loop in 2006, that much development wasn't anticipated. Additional land was added, uh, later on, and so more restaurants and more development. And we were successful in working with the ZBA to get that signal installed, but it wasn't part of the original design of that Shops Way.
Yeah.
And the crossing that was installed there doesn't leave any more width. There's a bridge that actually, that you drive over. You, you really don't realize it till you're, you're well over, but it starts, uh, about 100 feet or so before, where that brook goes under Shops Way. So there's really not enough room to widen that and add a third lane. Uh, the best advice I can say is if you know you're not going to turn left, stay on the right side, and try to avoid that, that mess. It is, it is problematic, um, and it is tricky in a very high, uh, traffic time, but for the most part, it, it works, uh, most of the day, uh, quite well.
Yeah. I'm glad there's a light there. That's great.
Those, those signals are tied into the signals on Route 20, and so they, they monitor themselves when traffic is increased on Route 20, turning into Shops Way. The time that each signal gets to turn left or to go through, uh, is adjusted.
Oh.
Automatically.
Okay. Okay. That's great. Thank you very much.
Uh, any other questions for Fred?
No.
No.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, you do.
Excellent.
I move the board vote to approve the traffic control signal agreement on Route 20 at the intersection of Shops Way North and Hitching Post Lane, between Mass DOT, Equity One JV Sub Northborough LLC, and the town, and to authorize the chair to execute same.
Second.
Moved and seconded.[1670.65]